Good evening. We would like to call out tonight's planning board of January 5th, 2016, to order. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of December 8th, 2015, and December 12th, 2015. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of December 8th and December 12th, 2015, as corrected.
All seconded.
Any comment or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Applicant Louis Leary, junior trustee, definitive subdivision, special permit to subdivide property into five lots, creating a planned residential development located on West Falmouth Public notices?
Notice of public hearing was published on December 18th, 2015, and in addition, 22 abutters were notified by return receipt on December 24th, 2015.
Can you?
Sorry. A notice of public hearing was published on December 18th, 2015. In addition, 22 abutters were notified by return receipt on December 24th, 2015.
For the applicant, Holmes McGrath?
Paul Glenn. I think that's a mistake. Warwick and Associates really did the plan.
Oops.
And there, so that happens. So, my name's Paul Glenn. I'm from Glenn Law Offices. I'm here with the applicant tonight. Lou and Camille Larry are here. And we're working on a little more than 10 acres in West Falmouth, east of 28A, west of the highway, so in between 28A and the highway, north of Brookhill Road, south of Thomas Landers, near Eric Lawson, for people that aren't sure where we are. Also here tonight is David Martin, doing the engineer work, and he can be here to answer any questions you have about that. Last February, we were here. This is a planned residential development. It's not a grid subdivision. It's five lots, and instead of being a grid, it's, we have a lot of open space that we'll go over, and five lots. We were here last February, 2015, and we showed preliminary plans at that point, both a grid subdivision and a planned residential subdivision. And I think it was the same board that was here. I think you were all here, and sorry, it was a year ago. But we went through that, and after listening to your comments, Mr. Larry decided that, yes, the planned residential development was the better way to go. And that's where we are, where we are today. What we brought to you last year was a six lot. We showed you a six lot grid subdivision, not a five lot grid subdivision. So, your attitudes or your suggestions last year were based on the six lots. So, Lou Larry was an educator at Falmouth High School for many years, and he, he's very familiar with West Falmouth. His family has assembled this parcel of property over the decades, and he wants to be proud of what he does here. This is something, bit of a legacy. He's retired, but it's energized him, working on this, and this is something that he's excited about doing and doing a good job on there. So, after he looked at it some more and thought about everything last year, we went from six lots to five lots. So if you look at Lot 5, that's a large lot, I think. It's 50,000 something square feet. The preliminary plan we brought in last year had two lots in that area. There were both lots and five, six, five and six. Lou thought it'd be better just to have five. It'd be a better plan, something he'd be more proud of. The idea of the planned residential development as opposed to the grid is to have a, have a site when you drive by of not a straight street, but just five houses scattered in the, in the woods up there, with a lot of open space around it. And I, I think the engineers have accomplished that.
Can you move the plan out so the public can see it as well? You can come forward. Can you read it from that distance? Does that help you? Yes, thank you.
We have it in front of us.
We have to see it too, so it's a compromise. Now, now we can't see it.
And so, we haven't been idle for the last year, but a lot of details, a lot of engineering, went to the state for a curb cut. We have the, we have the curb cut, and the state made many suggestions here also, that David Martin can explain to you there. And so, here we are today, asking your approval for this grid five lot subdivision. So you have the whole bylaw, not grid lot subdivision, planned residential development, not a, not a grid lot. There's a bylaw that allows this by special permit, and the bylaw has a lot of details in it, tells you about the size, that we're in a residential B neighborhood, and the different requirements. The requirements change as you move from one zoning district to another, but we're in the residential B district, and all of our lots with regards to size, frontage, and every, every requirement that we, that is in the bylaws, I think we've falsified. You can have 10,000 square foot lots. These are 30 to 50, with a lot of open space, with a, with a, it's more than 50 percent open space. I think it's 58 percent open space, right, right there. So, you know, as you're kind of refreshing your memory about this, this plan, I can, I'll keep talking about it, I guess, okay. So, there's some nice walking trails up there that, that Lou enjoys. Lou knows his property, of course, very well, better than anybody, buddy else, and we've kept those walking trails, not 100 percent. We're not going, the, the lots will be private lots. No one will have the right to walk across somebody's property, but we kept those walking trails up there in the open space pretty nice, and he's going to do a little more work just to make it so people can walk up there. There are some stone walls there that we've kept there, and we try to, in every instance, respect the land the way it's designed. You can see that lots 1 through 4 will have a shared driveway. Lot 5 will have its own driveway. So, lots 1 through 4, that'll require easements, an easement document that'll apply to all four lots, so that it's not just for driveway purposes, but it'll be for all utility purposes. Everybody will, will share it. And as I said, the state has approved the curb cut already. I'm told that a single curb cut for a single lot would be very routine for Lot 5, but we do have the curb cut for the, where the utilities are coming in for the other four So I think I've described the, the plan. Any, any particulars that, that you'd like to go over in more detail that I could help you with, that David Martin could help you with?
Can I just have a quick question about the path? I see where it shows it's relocated?
Yeah.
And it originally started, it looks like, over by the beginning of Lot 5? Is that? So where, where is it going to? I see it says relocated, and you said you didn't want it going through people's property. I see that. Where will it, is the back one just a loop? Or does it continue somewhere through?
Okay, so the, the back one is, is this? Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes. I see where you.
Right. So, the, the public doesn't have the right to, and will not have the right to, come up and walk through the property, right? So, but everybody in the subdivision will have the right to all the open space. They all abut the open space.
Gotcha.
So, these folks can't walk through this guy's backyard, but they, they're all going to, and Lou's going to do a little more work here just to make it so that they can all get safely around there.
That, that explains it. It's for the subdivision, thank you.
Do you still? I see on the engineering plan that a couple of open questions are the coastal pond overlay and the septic system.
Right.
Are you planning denitrifying septic?
Well, we're, we're planning on keeping the planning board happy. You know, I, you, you made a statement of that a year ago. I, I think that that would be something that perhaps the board would require, you know. So, we don't have septic system plans yet. We will do that, and we'll comply with, you know, if, if that's a condition, we're ready to comply with it.
Okay.
I'm just curious, how did you determine the open space is 57 percent? That's a pretty low high number. What determined that?
Well, it's because it's.
Bein generous.
It's, I think it's just math, right?
I mean, it went from six to five, and you increased the open space considerably.
It went from six to five, and we increased the open space considerably, right? Well, the, the building, there's one less building lot.
It just happened to work out then?
Yeah. It worked out. I, I forget the exact part of the, but the, the open space between lots 4 and 5 was much smaller than the other one. This is really nice, broad, open space now. And, yeah, we're well over the requirement, of what's required for open space with it. Yeah. I mean, eliminating the other lot helped. I, I think even with the six, there was going to be no issues with regard to open space.
Yes, Doug?
So, Ms. Lynn, did you say that the lots are like 30 to 25 or 30? Because it says minimum lot area is 40,000. Is that just a typo?
Right, but if you look at the, the bylaw for this particular article 25, yeah, so it's 40,000 square foot feet if you were doing a subdivision. But in RB, I think they only have 10 if you're doing a, doing a planned residential development. These are between over 30 to over 50, these five lots.
All right. I have one more question. Are you, John, going to be addressing any of the engineering questions that they had on the?
Well, David? I, I think he's ready to go if you, you want to hold them all through.
Well, I guess we'll wait.
I'll be right there.
Okay.
Are we ready for David Martin, anyway?
Yeah, because that's the questions I have in the engineering notes. I'd like to hear what they got.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Martin here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, do you have specific questions you would like me to answer, or should I march through the entire document?
Well, just what we have on the staff report, the topography, it says the engineering memo, location, regarding the shared driveway, and then the easements.
Shall I go through the DPW document?
David, I would just describe the drawings for the board and the public, just show them what they're looking at.
Yeah.
And if you could address any of the engineers' comments of part of your presentation, I think that's the best.
I'll start off with general description. You can see the individual lots, Lot 5, 4, 3, 2, and 1, shared driveway here. All of the drainage is directed to a drainage structure down here, and I'll note relative to comments from DPW, but we did take into account that no drainage would be addressed on-site to individual lots. My concern is I didn't have a control over that going forward, so that structure handles On-site sewage for each site, denitrification presumably. This lot will have an individual water service, same lot, there's a water main coming up to shared driveway, so we need more lots.
David, excuse me, could you go back and describe the, the drainage? It seems to, I think I see it, but there's an awful lot of slope there, and I just want to understand what you got going on in that driveway for water retention, which we're...
All, there's a, there's a series of catch basins.
Go ahead.
Down the driveway.
Yeah.
All of them pipe into this large drainage soil.
Okay, that's, so that's a swell?
And in that drainage soil, two stacked, bleached stacked, bleaching basins.
Okay, there's better detail, I'm sorry.
There is a detail. We're, because of the difficult soils in this neighborhood, stripping out to 18 feet, 18 or 20 feet roughly, it's there on the notes, and backfilling with crushed stone to the surface.
So it's going to be a crushed stone surface?
Yes.
Can you describe, just so, I think we can read it, but what's the average slope of that road right there?
Along the driveway, I think there's a reference to 11 percent.
Yeah. They signed off.
Ralph?
Yeah, I, yes, sir. You're planning to build a stone wall down there, is that right?
Along West Falmouth Highway, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Right.
The reason for that is to enable a safe site distance down the roadway. Can I walk over here and show you on your plan, what, what's going on?
Yeah, I, I think I can figure it out.
Okay.
I see. You want to, the site isn't because of the highway.
We had to cut the hill back, and the new wall will retain that hill.
So it's like a retaining wall?
Yeah, because there's a lot of stone on site, so we'll use the stone on the site to build that wall.
Yeah, the town engineer recommended that you have a, included in the easement documents, something to maintain that.
And that, excuse me, that's in fact within that easement area, and we do concur with the town engineer. And I'll mention that in general, with all of the comments the town engineer has made in concurrence with, so we'll make some small changes, he suggested for drainage. A lot of this is observation and comments that he's made, and we're in concurrence.
Do you have a copy of his memo?
I, I do, yeah.
Great, okay, thank you.
Just from my understanding, so this hill was cut back substantially just to create better site?
Along West Falmouth Highway.
Along the highway.
Yes.
They talk about erosion protection measures?
Yes.
What are, what are those? What are you going to do about that?
We're going to save the excavated areas and install silt fence and straw wattle at the toe of slopes.
Okay.
Thank you. So, so then that's just during construction, the erosion control?
Well, the erosion control needs to remain in place until vegetation's been established.
Okay, so it's your understanding that once the vegetation's established, the two-to-one slope is fine?
It's very stable, yes.
The recommendation about the 30-inch minimum sump on the catch basins, is that something you're incorporating?
Yes, we will incorporate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is the public?
Wait, wait, wait. There was one question about the radius of the driveway. Was that addressed? The radius of the curve going into the driveway?
I investigated that today in some detail. I guess I'll comment to you that the fire rescue department, I trust you have that file, has signed off on that.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether they signed off on a change to that, or whether...
I believe they signed off, quite certainly, they signed off on the plan you have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one further question. That's a steep driveway, so I'm looking at it, and it looks like it somewhat levels off down at the bottom?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, because when a person comes down a driveway that's steep, in the winter, and if it's not sanded and it's private, then you got, you have an issue about sliding out into the, into the highway. So it's, it, it looks like it levels off quite well. Am I right on that?
I would concur, yes.
No kidding.
Paul, is that one?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of effort used for stormwater mitigation, and some comments in here with some conditions about roof drains going to dry wells and whatnot. Is that going to be a condition?
Um, clearly after, clearly after the board.
Well, I think you have to minimize the runoff, because the whole area slopes down this area, it's a huge area.
Do, do please keep in mind that that was taken into consideration, that there would, we would have no control over development of the individual lots, and all runoff from the lots would be going to that structure. So it's a very conservative design. Because my concern with that was that, once this plan's approved, may, each individual lot may go to another engineer, and I have no hand in how they handle their runoff. So I had to treat it as, oh, it all went to that structure.
Yes, Doug?
So I would say that given that concern, we probably should indicate that we would like to see dry wells, especially given the topography. And then the last thing, last comment I have, is the engineering was looking for milestones for them to come out and visit. Have you given thought to that, and that might be if they might have comments during construction?
Certainly agreeable to that. As far as scheduling milestones, we hadn't taken any positive steps.
I think they were requesting us to give consideration to that. Maybe we would pick some of those times, which would probably be more appropriate for you to notify them.
I mean, if you're asking me to offer up, I would begin by a pre, any, pre-construction meeting with them before any activity on site. I think that during that meeting, they would, could coordinate suitable times for both parties.
That's a good idea.
I think it's very important for them to have a hand in what's going on there.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the public have a comment? Come up to introduce yourself?
Hi. I'm Dr. Frank Valentine. I'm right next door, 825 and 819. 819 is above me, I'm 825. Okay? The, the entrance to my property, I went up many years ago to the, I don't know where, but they told me they never figured out the, the lower area, the two-inch way. Nobody made any comment about this years ago, and they just said, "Do what you want." That, maybe I'm naive about this, but it was, it was never really taken care of. But that's not the problem. First of all, I want to say Louis is the greatest neighbor, and he's really nice. I don't want to make this happen, okay, but I have a number of questions, okay? If you can help me. May I read? Okay, first of all, as far as you, we're talking about drainage, all right? I live right next door, okay? I have an easement that goes up to 819. It's been changed over the years for who lives where. It's very complicated, but I, I noticed that when I had severe rains on my easement, it was terrible. It rotted, we got ruts on the easement, okay? It was fixed, okay? Then we came down to a level area, and no problem. So we're okay. I know Louis's property, because I cleaned the liquor bottles in the front, so I find out what's, what's going on. I, I look at his property, it's very level, way down to the, to where it slopes. So I don't think he's, your guy's going to have a problem with that. I mean, it really, it looks, looks fine to me. Let's see. Curb cut. Uh... Uh, is the curb cut gonna be on twenty-eight? Is it? Okay, great. Okay. That's gonna be the entrance to these people's property. Great. Okay.
Way down.
I apologize for not being, uh, on the other meetings. I was out of the country and I, I apologize, but I'm here today. I just got back Sunday.
Would you like me to point out the curb cut for you?
No, that, that's fine. I believe you, if, if it's on twenty-eight, I have no problem with it.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
Twenty-eight, yeah. I mean, I apologize. Twenty-eight, yeah.
No, just, the plan's right in front of you.
I, I understand, but I, I can't read plans. I'm a, I'm a doctor, right? I don't know, I don't know if anything, I can read teeth, but not doc plans. I'll listen to you guys. You, you tell me what to do. Uh, okay, we have a little bit of a, a, a number of problems. Not, not big problems, okay? Uh, when I was first moved here, almost twenty years ago, uh, I had a gentleman who lived way above me on the left-hand side of my property. Uh, you know who he is. And he had a business way up there, and trucks used to go on my easement at five and six in the morning, okay? That was taken care of. We, we sold properties and did all kinds of things, but it was five and six in the morning. And all day, ev- every day except Sunday, uh, I just wanted to make sure that I don't have, I don't wake up at seven in the morning with construction workers. This is gonna be a, a while till this is taken care of. I would appreciate it if, I don't know if you can make a law about this or what, uh, between, they start at eight and they can go forever, okay?
The town has, we're not involved in creating town bylaws here. Whatever the town bylaws are is what he has to comport to, uh, that's it.
Okay.
We don't, we're not gonna condition it specially outside the town bylaws.
Okay.
So, they are what they are.
They are, they are. Okay. No problem. Okay. Now, uh, town, the town bylaws again must be, are you allowed to work on Saturday?
These are questions for the building commissioner.
Building commissioner?
Not for the planning board, yeah.
Okay. No problem. Uh, I have some, there are some trees, we're very close together, so I have some trees on his property and my property. Some of them are leaning towards me. I don't know who's gonna take care of it, who's responsible.
I suggest you talk to your neighbor about it.
He, he's cool. It's just fine. No problem. Okay?
We would like to keep the comments to this plan that's in front of us and everything on this plan, and really not go off-field too far on history or other things.
I'm not going off-field, sir. I ju- I'm let next door them. I like Louis and I just wanna be, I, I don't know what you're allowed to speak about, but these are my concerns, okay? Number one concern is, or I'd like to know, maybe the engineer can tell me, uh, what's the distance from my house to the...
I think it's lot five.
Where the, where the, where's it gonna... Where the, where's it gonna be a house? A home? I'm sorry. Home?
He won't, they don't know yet. There, it could be anywhere on the northern part, but the engineer can point out to you.
Approximately, where do you expect it to be?
Could you tell me approximately where your house is? There's, I believe that you, you're, I believe this is the driveway you're referring to?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, that, that's just a driveway. I'm right over here.
Well, there's only, there's only one driveway that they come in.
This is the easement?
No, this is the...
That's a road.
This is Route twenty-eight, yeah. Here's Eric Lawson.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is, this is my eas- where's the easement?
It's right here.
Okay. Easement up here.
Yeah.
Okay, do you...
Okay, so put your house...
Friggin' acres away.
Are you on the slot?
I'm, I'm around here and Eric's up here.
Eric, are you Frank Valentine?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Okay. Here's lot five.
Yes.
Uh, house location would be approximately here.
About how many feet from here?
Mr. Valentine, no, I'm gonna suggest you take one of these plans home with you.
I have one here, you can have it.
And you study it and you talk to your neighbor about it. This is public hearing.
This is for my house to his, and my house is not on this property.
Two hundred, two hundred and seventy-three is my...
Fine, no problem. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay. I'll be best. Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, but a, a number of things. Maybe you could do, I can tell you or not. Listening price of the homes?
Not subject to this meeting.
Okay.
Keep going.
I'll speak to Louis. Okay, utilities. May I ask, speak about that?
What's your question?
I wanna know if there could be a both round or underground.
The engineer, I don't see any thing shown on the plan.
What are you saying?
I'm sorry. Go on.
I'm, I'm presuming, if I could, that we're only talking about lot five.
Yes.
The water would be underground, it would be a single family, traditional single-family tap.
Right.
Um, the, I don't think a decision has been made about electric and telephone, um, whether it comes in overhead or underground.
Yeah, but you're...
And I think that, that would be ultimately up to the new owner of that property, whether they chose one over the other.
All set?
Thank you. I'm sorry if you asked a question that... No problem.
Yes, sir.
Richard Bowden and I live at one oh-six Ambleside Drive. My question is, is the driveway a suitable substitute for a road for emergency vehicles?
We have a letter from the fire department regarding that issue in the file, and it says it is.
Hmm.
Thanks, Louis.
Okay.
That's deferred to the fire department all the time. Yes, sir.
I'm Ken Beal, I live at seven sixty-five West Falmouth Highway. A neighbor to the south a bit. Couple of quick questions. On the plan, there are sightlines north and south, about four hundred feet. Just from my identification, are those good numbers? Is there a state standard? Just tell me something about that.
Yes, go ahead.
Those are based on state standard that we've met and I trust you have the MASTDOT approval in your file. So they are state standard sightline, it takes sense to do.
The other concern is additional traffic, and this is a forty mile per hour zone. I know that's not in your purview, but we just gotta keep that in mind, and we should probably try to change it. That's a concern. And I hesitate to say, but I also received an email from Nancy Hayward, which I hope you got, and had that in the record, a couple of concerns that she expressed relating to, again, the speed limit and wastewater. Can I assume that that's, you have received those?
Is that in the correspondence?
I didn't see anything in the correspondence.
No, it's in the file, yes. We have Nancy's email.
We've already commented on wastewater, so... Anyone else? Motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do you wanna leave it open for written comments, or...
This has been open for almost a year.
Okay.
I think it's had its, uh, proper airing to the public.
Pull in there. Remember, the, the, it wasn't open, open. This is the official.
It probably seems new to people, because it's been a year.
Well, okay, we'll...
I don't know, I was just asking.
Make the move it along, but I think that we'll have to just wait another week. That's fine. I think, no problem with that, thank you. Probably a good idea.
So I should retract my motion?
No, just to close the meeting, but open for written comment only.
Okay.
For, for how long?
Next meeting, next possible time.
So you won't, all right, so you want to keep the, the motion is to close the hearing but for written comments until Tuesday, January the twelfth, at which time then you'll discuss them.
One more, sir?
So if there's gonna be written...
You need, you, you need a second.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have discussion, but...
Let him, yeah, comment, please.
So if, I, I'm not anticipating, um, giving any more written comment, but if someone else does, just in the sake of fairness, um, we'd need to see that and have time to comment on it. I mean, we could come back. I, I, I don't know what, what the written com-
Planning board's always open, Paul.
Okay, so some, there'd be just something set up that if somebody did make a written comment that you'd see, we'd, we'd wanna see it so we could respond to it. That, that's all I have to say to that, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to close the meeting, but to keep open for public discussion until...
Close the hearing to written, written comments.
Any favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? None? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Public discussion. Peterson Company LLC, site plan review to construct a second building, approximately three thousand two hundred square feet, for use as office space and business space located at four ninety-seven Thomas B. Landers Road. We have the right engineer this time, Holmes and McGrath.
You got a little free average.
Notice.
Oh, notices, public notices, yes, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, notice of public meeting was issued on December twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, and six addresses were notified by regular mail on December twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, for the applicant.
For the record, Rauli Sardi from Holmes and McGrath, with the engineers and land surveyors representing the applicant. The applicant is Peterson Company LLC. The location of the project is at four ninety-seven Thomas B. Landers. This lot, which is lot two, was developed back in two thousand and three. The development was for the existing building, which is this one here, the parking lot and utilities for that building. Um, back in two thousand and three, in order to develop that side with that building, there were two special permits through the Board of Appeals, um, one in nineteen ninety-eight and other in two thousand and two. Um, subsequently to that, the same developer developed lot one adjacent to it. That was in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, with two buildings similar to the existing one in two thousand and three. Now he's looking to add a building on lot two. This rear building, it's about thirty-three percent of what the existing building is, approximately thirty-two hundred square feet. We're not proposing to expand the impervious surfaces. We're proposing, except for the roof of the building, we're proposing to use the existing gravel area and propose twelve gravel parking spaces. There's an existing stone wall in this area that's gonna be pushed back and extended to allow for the area for gravel parking spaces. One of the special permits that was obtained in nineteen ninety-eight was for gravel parking, so we're gonna continue using that special permit. The location of the proposed building is in this particular setback to this property line, because there is access to the town land. There's, there's an ancient way in this corner of the property, and that has to remain open. So we have pavement adjacent to it that exists, that will continue to remain, and the rest of it is gravel that will remain. And that way, the public has access to that ancient way. That's a trail that keeps on going for miles through the town property. Um, utilities are gonna be, we're gonna be proposing new water service all along the outside of the pavement, so that we don't have to trench the pavement. The septic, we're gonna do an E-one pump that's gonna go through the gravel area and connect to the existing septic system. The existing septic system is large enough to handle, um, the proposed flow. These are gonna be for garage bays, so we're gonna have floor drains and we're gonna have a holding tank. We have ample paved parking spaces, even though the regulations require a certain number, we don't anticipate to need all of them. Hence the area for twelve gravel parking spaces, 'cause we don't anticipate being used. We currently have enough handicap parking spaces, so we don't need additional parking spaces for handicap. We are relocating the, um, dumpster to this location. All of this development is gonna happen on the rear of the property, so there's not much impact on the front of the property. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
You said there are gonna be garage bays on, is this a one-story or two-story building?
It's one-story. All these buildings are prefab metal buildings, and they all have garage doors.
Okay.
So that's...
So the office space is gonna be within that?
Right, there's a portion that's gonna be used as office. He's received, um, calls from potential tenants. He doesn't have the space in the existing building, so that's why he's proposing this additional building.
Uh, what kind of traffic do you expect, it's not, uh, it, it's just gonna be the people utilizing, uh, these areas?
Right, there's, there's very, very little traffic that goes in and out of these facilities. Um, there's cross-connection between the buildings. There's, there's some vehicle movement between the buildings, so there is some cross-connections, that's why we have the two driveways. But onto Thomas B. Landers is usually the, the employees of the property, of the tenants.
'Cause I was wondering about, uh, this is the, uh, site plan traffic mitigation need report, one of the open items, and I was just wondering what type of traffic was gonna be generated that, uh, in, in addition to what's already going in there?
Yeah, we, we didn't make the calculations, so I can't really answer specifically to that particular question. Um, but we know that the site doesn't get used a lot, meaning traffic coming in and out. There is the morning, employees are coming to the property, um, and afternoon when they leave, but I don't have the answer specific to that question.
You have a question, Paul?
Yeah, the, the new building, are there gonna be offices in there, you said, or just manufacturing?
Um, like in any, um, business like this, there's a section that is used for office, a desk, uh, things like that, to process the paperwork, but most of it is just garage.
I see you have a patented sewer system at that building.
A what?
A patented sewer system in that building. Specialized sewer pump.
Um, it's a knee pump system. Um, what it is... Right. What it is, it's just lifting the effluent, because we're so far behind the existing septic. Elevation-wise, it doesn't get to the septic tank by gravity, so we have to put a, an E-one system to lift it.
Is there a grinder in that?
Yes.
'Cause this is a one and a half, one and a quarter inch line, that's two hundred and forty-five feet long.
Right.
And there's no cleanouts.
It's a, it's a grinder pump, it's a force main that goes and has to connect with the gravity line. It cannot pump directly into the tank, has to pump into the gravity line, so that... It cannot pump directly into the tank, has to pump into the gravity line, so that, once it hits the gravity line, then it continues on by gravity into the tank.
I believe you said that there will be floor drains in these bays?
Right, it's a, it's a plumbing code requirement. Any commercial garage access that vehicles can access the, the inside of the building have to have floor drains, and have to be directed into a, a non-hazardous wastewater tank, holding tank.
Okay, that was my concern, that, that there's something there that will catch whatever.
Right, it cannot be connected to the septic system, it has to be a holding tank. And there's an alarm within the tank that at two-thirds of capacity, it sounds off, and that gives the tenants, um, a third capacity to have a pump down.
Can I ask a further question about that? Do you, explain a little bit better how that works, or a little more, I should say. Is it separate the contaminants and then let water drain, or is everything contained?
Everything is contained.
Okay.
Um, so, the tenants have to be educated so that they cannot be washing the floors every week, every month, or too often, because then you have to pump it that, that more. It's just intended for any spills, should there be a spill, and there has to be a washout, the, the tank is there to contain all of that. It's, it's happening now for the past five years, we've noticed, um, a lot of commercial facilities with garage, we have to be proposing this.
And what's the, uh, I understand the alarm goes off at two-thirds capacity, but what's to say that human error and it doesn't get pumped? Does it simply overflow at the top, or is there a drainage runoff?
It overflows into the building.
Into the bays.
Okay.
So somebody will make the call.
So you'll know about it.
Somebody will make the call eventually.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, Ralph?
Yes, sir. Um, the wildlife corridor, can you point that out to us on your, on your, uh, layout? There's a, there's a note here on our, uh, site plan report, that, 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 uh-
It's not, it's not in particular to this one lot, but the adjacent lot, Lot 1, which I don't have the full extent of it in this plan.
Well, just where's the, where's the, where's the wildlife corridor in relation to that, in relation to that lot?
On this side of, of Lot 1, there's a wildlife corridor that goes back and blends with the town land.
So this development doesn't have anything to do with it?
It doesn't have a lot, doesn't have it a lot, so Lot 1 does. At one time, maybe there's, there's some confusion because at one time Lot 1 and Lot 2 was one lot.
Okay.
It was subdivided into two lots in the late 1990s.
Okay.
For this two development, maybe there is still some.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Uh, you mentioned that, uh, the stone retaining wall that's there now is gonna be pushed back?
Right.
So you're cutting into what appears to be like a 30-foot slope?
By this, this is sitting gray back here, it's currently at two to one.
Okay.
Um, about six feet before the existing stone wall, it starts to flatten out. What they're gonna do, they're gonna take the existing stone walls and move them back six feet, taking that sort of plateau area, and they're gonna extend it all the way to the back corner of the proposed building. A section of it is gonna become one and a half to one, and it has to be retained with, um, ripper. 12-inch stones, 18-inch stone, um, and then the back of it, which remains at two to one, we're proposing to use, um, a juke map for erosion control, um, and stabilization of the slope.
Okay, so you're just not cutting it to this existing slope, then, you're just using-
There is some cutting, there is some cutting, and that's six feet that we're pushing back. You need the six feet to push back for the parking, plus you need four feet for the new boulders to be pushed in, so we're talking about probably 10 feet to 12.
Okay.
What kind of use does the ancient way get? You made particular mention that that would be kept open. So, does it get any use? What is the, what was the ancient way used for?
Um, it's trail, people can, in fact, in the special permit through the Board of Appeals, four of any of these parking spaces could be used for public to park, walk their dogs into the town property, jog around the, the property and come back out. I mean, not the property, but the town land.
One behind my house is used all the time.
Yeah. Well, ancient ways usually cannot be blocked, and that's why I was-
You can rearrange them.
Yeah.
One of the things I don't see in the file is any elevations of what the building's gonna look like, any architectural elevations?
Yeah, these were the plans that we received from the, um, the company that's providing the prefab building. It's a metal prefab building, and those are the elevations that they showed us.
Those elevations?
No, we don't have those.
No. Well, those are the elevations. We wanna see what it looks like, I think you're gonna have to come back with the front and rear elevations, this is part- We now have this, a little bit of site plan as a design review, and this is the only shot the town gets to look at to see what that building's gonna look like. We'd just like to see it.
I can pass along a couple of pictures of the other buildings, which is the same construction.
There's your slope. But there's your slope, I mean, that's what it's gonna, it's a metal roofed building, or it's, it's a metal building. It does have a slope, there's designs on the plan.
I, I would like to see, I, I would like to see the building exterior and the roof, what the materials are, just to see what it looks like.
I believe probably something better to show is what the other four, three buildings on, on the two lots are, cause this is same construction, same company that provided the construction for those buildings. This one, instead of having half pitch forward, half pitch back, is just half pitch forward.
Is that so you can put some solar panels on the roof?
I didn't get those instructions, but it's possible, it's facing south.
Is this the height of the building, is this what we're looking at for height, or is this?
It's probably the same height as this building, that picture is this face of this building. So we're talking about same type of construction, same type of height from the ridge. This one, we have a height of, on the ground that we submitted, of 26 feet.
26 feet and 18 at the back, right?
Right, at the back. And 16 at the front, which is the garage base in the front. The color of it is the metal color that they paint, it's like a beige-gray. The gutters, they have like a brown paint on them. I mean, if I come back with elevation plans, not much more than I can show.
I, I just think it makes a complete set, we're doing, we are doing a design review here, and you're not showing us the elevations of the proposed building in the, in the package that you presented.
I could try to come back with elevation, um, but I can tell you right now, it's probably gonna be looking at the same elevations from the package that was submitted, probably-
The only reason being, this is the first time, I think, that this board has actually sat in for the design review, and I just don't want it just to come in and say it's gonna look like this building and tell us what the color is without anything filed for it. So I, I really, for completeness of the file, I'd like to see some more on the, on the building elevations.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There, this is a metal building, he does have dimensions here, I, I'm actually kind of trying to figure out what you're gonna ask him to bring back, other than a metal building with heights. I understand about the design review, but you've got 26 feet at one and 16 sloping metal building. What are we looking for, other than the color?
Color, are there any windows, is there any landscaping, I mean, it's just very short on detail, I'd like to see a little bit more. That is a role we've taken on, and I, just my opinion. I'm asking for it. But no elevation plan, I can't see what the building looks like, usually when we do a design review, you get to see what the building looks like. I mean, I could fill in the blanks from, here's a picture of the building next door, and here's the framing plan, and I could put it in my brain and make a picture of it, I'm asking for a little bit more detail.
One more, one question. So I'm, I'm actually familiar with the site, and I, I know that the, the ancient way is all grown in now, do you, do you let people walk up the driveway, or? I mean, they can't really, I don't think they can-
It's actually not grown in, um, we took some pictures last week.
Okay.
If I brought them with me.
Talking in the front part where the, the parking area and the-
Oh, right, the ancient way through the property is the paved parking lot.
Okay.
So you have to access through the paved driveway, park in, in one of four spaces, and then access by foot through the trails.
I see, and once you get to that back corner, I, I do know that it's-
Right, so there's no trail off of the parking area through the, through the lot, through Lot 2.
Okay, so, the picture's not really accurate in that sense, right, on my, I don't have any, uh, green shading on mine.
That's a trail beyond the property.
Okay.
Are those parking spaces, those four that you mentioned, are those, is there a sign there that says that they can be used for that?
No, there's no sign, um, designating them.
Okay, but I mean, so employees could park, right?
Right.
So they're not designated for that, they're just gonna be used?
There have to be four spaces available for parking. The site is never full.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't have any issue with having a problem.
Any, any four spaces on the entire lot?
When the site plan special permit was approved in 98, is the last four spaces.
And could you point those out on, on, on this chart, Mr.?
There'll be the last four spaces.
Okay. Thank you. You know, as-
Yes, Doug?
I think as business has increased, the, uh, the spaces usually are not available, though. I don't know if that's important, but just a personal observation.
They have to go back to the special permit granting authority for that one, that's not us.
Okay.
Right, they'll-
I think we should let them take, in that case, it's the, uh, ZBA, so they'll, they'll deal with that issue.
Alright, I'll just bring it up.
We'll make a point to it.
Yeah, this Friday, there's a, a meeting with the site review to go over the same project, and then there's gonna be a site plan, a special permit modification application before the Board of Appeals.
I'm confused, Brian. This is the point I was getting, it sounds like there's a disconnect here.
I'm sorry, the design review committee is looking at-
Because this project requires a modification to the existing special permit through the Board of Appeals, design review has to review this plan. But because this is also a project which increases 1,000 square feet of building and proposes more than five square feet, five parking spaces, it requires site plan review in addition to design review.
Alright, so the confusion is that the bylaw changed the last town meeting.
That's why the confusion happened.
The design review committee no longer exists. This committee has taken over that role. So we could save you a trip.
If we have to.
That's the point I was trying to make earlier, I guess I didn't make it clear.
Um, there is a meeting already scheduled for Friday with, with the site review.
Well, let us know how you do.
They better read the town bylaws.
We'll, we'll sort it out for you.
Nobody's gonna be there.
Or if they are, they're not really the design review.
You're looking at the design review committee.
Well, for the-
Actually, that's not true.
No, it's just-
They do signage, but, but, but we do, we do aesthetic, we do the, the buildings.
And that is why I was asking for building elevations and materials, I wanted to see what the building looks like, cause that, this is the, this process is the design review, it's incorporated into site plan review.
Alright, now I'm the one confused.
Well, I think you all were a little bit. It's the first one, this is the first one.
Let me, uh, give us a call, and we'll, uh, straighten it out.
So perhaps whatever was going to be presented to the design review committee, you're not prepared yet since it's Friday, I would assume.
It's actually the same package that was sent to both, both committees.
Before your decision, we'll have something in the package for us to look at.
That'd be good.
They're certainly free to go to any meeting and say, well, the decision that issues is from this board.
We'll just keep this open?
It's not a hearing, it's a plan review?
Plan review, so it's always open, okay.
I would say in regard to your question, Jim, is, okay, we've got a picture of the building on the site. Presumably, the company that puts these together will know more what is being ordered and can give us some example literature of what it would look like, so that would be part of the file.
I would like to have something.
Yeah, and that's why I'm thinking, okay, well, it's this, but, um, they're getting it from a company, and most companies do have, sales literature that, so you know what you're getting, and that's, I think, what you're asking for, isn't it?
Yeah, and it's really just a matter of form, I wanted to make sure that we were actually doing what we're supposed to be doing tonight.
Well, and it's, if we're design review, we need to know what are the garage bays going to physically look like.
Yep.
Well, we have the dimensions, if we had a brochure that showed-
We should see the doors on the building.
So given that we-
I'll check, I'll call, I'll talk with the applicants in a few years, we get like catalog cut for you, I'm sure.
We'll be easy with you, just give us something, okay?
So at the moment, I, I know I have to bring some more information about the building construction and the looks of the elevations.
Right.
Um, any other particular question that's still up in the air?
Do you have anything?
No.
No.
Well, we were asking about signage, uh, for the open, the parking spaces that should be available to people who use that ancient way.
Well, I think that gets referred to the ZBA, we get to refer that to the ZBA.
Well, we still have to put it in, our-
Yeah, we put in our package the ZBA.
And possibly design review. That may be what they're gonna be doing. So there's probably still a role there, they're gonna probably review your signage and other issues.
Right. How about, um, lighting? Can you describe the lighting on the site of the building?
In all these parking areas, all the part, all the lighting is off of the building, there's building-mounted lights. There's no operations during off-hours, so there's really no need for lighting after 6 o'clock or, or what have you. So all the lighting on this parking is off of the existing building. The proposed building, it's probably gonna have regular, um, lights for pedestrians and employees, but the existing parking, which is not gonna change, will continue to have the lighting from this building.
Yes?
Will there be lighting for the other parking spaces from the side of this, this new building, proposed building, onto those?
No.
Or is it coming off the main building still?
The 12 gravel parking area, they're just shown as 12 gravel parking spaces that would be built, but we don't anticipate them being used. So there's not, no proposed lighting for them.
Other than the gravel parking, is there any others, other, uh, special permit requirements that you gotta take to other ports?
There was two special permits granted by the, um, Board of Appeals. One was for the gravel parking, and the second was for the uses. One of the uses, one of the tenants using this property is a contractor.
So, yeah, they'll deal with it, I just wanted to-
It, it has to do with the use.
That's fine, that's not just... So Brad, how do we handle, do we do a referral to them, make sure they, they talk about those things, or we just let them go on their own?
No, you'll have is a plan review that goes to the building commissioner, and they'll see the Board of Appeals.
Since you're coming back, uh, is there any way we could get a cross-section of that, uh, retaining wall and that, that sloped area behind it?
Yeah, that was one of the comments from engineering department. I can talk to the developer, who will be the one constructing this wall, to give us an idea of what he intends to build.
Yes, Paul?
I don't have a particular concern about the building, but it says closed-
I don't have a particular concern about the building, but it says colors to be determined and so forth. If you are coming back, it'd be nice to know what colors I anticipated there.
One last question.
Yes, Doug?
How do you control the rainwater from the roof?
The roof is gonna be directed to two drywalls. The downspout on this side, there's a full drywall. Downspout on this side, there's another full drywall. And the parking lot already has its own drainage system. So because we're only increasing impervious as the roof, we're already mitigating for that with the two drywalls.
Is that what I'm looking at in the front? There's a little circle in front of...
Yes, it is. That's where he's pointing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? So I'll see you...
To be determined.
To be determined.
So what happens Friday?
Unless you have signs.
Nothing at five o'clock?
Well, it'd be interesting to find out. Go in the meeting and come back and tell us what happened.
Yeah, you can tell us. Bring us a report.
Refer to last year's town meeting vote on the design review to make sure you follow it.
But there is still a design review committee and they do signs. And they may have some other roles that we're not aware of. I think we're just doing the, the design review on the buildings when we do a site plan. So if there's no site plan review, they're still doing their own design review, I think. Is that right?
No.
No?
That's ours.
No, that's ours.
Okay.
We all should read the bylaw.
Yeah. No, I just thought that, you know, there may be a case where they still...
They just have signs. That's all I know.
They have a goal on this side.
Okay. Thank you. See you soon. Now, next is a planning board discussion. Town with Village Cultural District. Large description in the files. Has everyone had time to read it?
I read it last time.
I read it.
Right. Any comments or questions?
I just have a question as to what it was brought forth. What are we actually supposed to, is this a part of the local comprehensive plan? Or is this, I wasn't at the joint meeting, so why is this sitting before us, is what I'm gonna ask?
What was explained to us at the joint meeting was that if you have a cultural district defined with rules and definition, a beginning and end, and it comports to state guidelines, you know, it has a beginning and an end with a sign at each end, you are available, funding is available to you. There's certain grants that you can get. There's certain advantages to having it and the, it was thought that it would be great for our town to have, be able to take advantage of this. And so it was decided that it should run from up by Highfield all the way down to Gifford Street and then up Gifford Street and ending at the Art Center. And there was, there was a sign presented at the joint meeting, there was a sign presented, this is a sign that's gonna be at the beginning, this is the sign that's gonna be the end. And it would make the town eligible for grants on a statewide basis for cultural districts.
I think there was some discussion as to whether, where the appropriate location was. They wanted to include the Artist's Guild, but they felt like they may get some feedback that perhaps it should be a sign at the corner of Main Street leading to Gifford Street. So some discussion of where the sign should go and maybe looking for guidance from us, I think.
There was also some like, we think the Artist's Guild should be included, but we recognize that there's this big blank space between. But it is walkable, a walkable distance from Highfield. And that's one of the requirements of the Village Cultural District. And I know we have talked about with the transportation study. To some degree, this mimics parts of that transportation study, that the signage has to be better. And they take up signage in this desire here too. So what kind of signage? So that somewhat goes into the transportation element, if you will. This will, to some degree, go into the historic element, because part of that, again, is signage and we certainly have a lot of buildings that have historic interest, especially from Highfield on down, Cultural, the Theater, the Conservatory. Up there, we have a number of galleries. So I can see their desire to extend and pass. Of course, you've got the Village Green, which is very historic, a town that goes way back. So we do have a lot of historic interest. And some of this goes for sure into tourism to bring people in. If you can, I'm trying to think of the appropriate word. If you can consolidate something that can be part of the cultural draw to Thelma, say through the chamber, through the town website. And if you can do that, if you can get this designation and work towards that, it would be a draw to Thelma. I have a question because it almost begs that when it says reporting requirements are annual and include visitor numbers, building occupancy and changes in occupancy rates, who is going to be tasked to give those numbers reporting back to the MCC? This grant, if it's given, is only for five years and it may be renewed, it may not be renewed. There's no guarantee that there's gonna be any kind of administrator for it because there has to be funds for an administrator. So that's one of the questions I have. And it says create new job opportunities in Thelma. I question what job opportunities it may be creating. I don't know.
Reporting.
Reporting. But I really don't know because it's almost the, okay, well, it's all here. So we're trying to consolidate what is here and sell it. I have no objection to this sort of cultural district. I think it's a good thing. But I don't know what the vision is. It wasn't, I think, totally laid out and maybe they don't have the total vision yet.
Ralph, you had a question down there?
I do.
Ken's question was, why is this in front of us? And we have been asked to endorse this. This is, this is, this happens through the Board of Selectment, not us.
Right.
And on page two, it says see a map. Well, there is no map, which is a shame because it's broken up a little bit. And I think anybody who would want to endorse this would like to see a map, but it can be described verbally. It says it's supposed to be walkable. So if we are to endorse this, I would think that since we are always concerned about safety and when we do site plan reviews and so forth, that there are, if this, if this district goes where it says it goes, there's not sidewalks on every place, okay? If you're gonna walk up to Highfield Hall from downtown, first of all, you gotta be in reasonably good shape. And second of all, you're gonna be, if you get off from the bike path and go up there, you know, they could, they might wanna do that, you're gonna be on a very narrow road going up there. And so if we were to endorse this, my recommendation would be to this committee that's putting this together and to the Board of Selectment, if they approve it, that they make sure that there are designated walking areas throughout the cultural district. And that be, it be, that they have sidewalks. Unless, you're talking money now. And so they say there's no funding from the state available, that kind of thing. So they're gonna have to figure that out. But I wouldn't wanna endorse it because it says it has to be walkable unless there's sidewalks throughout the district.
That was part of the transportation study that was recommended. Now, it doesn't go all the way up, but one could extrapolate that sidewalks need to be put in.
Is that a private road? I thought it was because the EDIC, when the road needed to be built, the EDIC loaned them fifty thousand dollars so that the neighborhood paved it. It's not even a town road. So that's problematic here.
There you go.
Well, you could always put these signs at the corner of Palmer Avenue and on Main Street at the corner of Gifford Street for now until further times.
Or we could turn around to bus station. There's sidewalks there.
Possibility.
And bike path.
We could still get this rolling, but keep it in a safe...
Yeah, I thought that was part of the discussion with the Selectment about getting up to Highfield. And I thought we were talking about bringing the signage down to Palmer Ave and then on the end of Main Street and then telling people, okay, by the way, there's Highfield Hall up there. I don't know if I'm correct in recalling that or...
You are. It was a matter of visibility from the size. Nobody's gonna see one up there on Highfield when they're coming into town.
Right. Okay.
But visibility and liability.
But it needs a beginning and an end. So the sign is important. And it has the two terminuses, the definitions, so...
Because we were talking about the corner of Palmer Ave, Main Street there, having a sign there. And then because when we're talking about making the dogleg turn, we said, well, we can't really do that, but we could put a sign saying that the Artist's Guild is further down. But the, I think, I agree with Doug. I think we should start it at one spot and end it. It's a clear thing. There's a lot of culture along this stretch of Main Street and Village Green. It's a place to start and then see how it goes. And then there may be funding for extending it.
Yes, Paul?
I was gonna say a similar thing before Doug started talking. I think the concept is very good, go from art center to art center. But Massachusetts Cultural Council is gonna come down and look at this. And they're inclined to shorten the historic district anyway. So I think we'd be better off, since this is only for five years anyway, to have a well-defined cultural district with the signs and apply for the extension later on. Because if you, once you get past the library, you know, the cultural center of Steve's Pizza is good for people here, but I'm not sure it's gonna attract a lot of others. But you have to go through a section and then make a left to go to the Art Center. I don't wanna preclude the Art Center being part of that, but like someone said, it could be signs for Highfield, it could be signs for the Art Center as well. But a well-defined downtown area would not necessarily include that leg going all the way around to the Art Center or north to Highfield, but I don't know.
What do you think about, I noticed you're cutting off the bus station, station renovations, which we're planning to have public uses in and could quite possibly fit nicely into this. You feel that should be cut off and it needs to go to Palmer Ave?
Is somebody here you all saying?
Am I suggesting that?
I thought you just said that.
Well, I'm suggesting a very defined area might be on that corner going forward. It could be extended to, up to the station.
Wherever the sidewalks go?
Because that's where the sidewalk is. But a defined area is, would be more limited. And I think the Massachusetts Cultural Council would be more inclined to approve something that's very compact and defined rather than saying, oh, yeah, by the way, we gotta go up a quarter mile up the hill.
What do you think about going to where the bike path is? Because there's sidewalks and public access right there. And if in fact access becomes better up the hill, we could agree to add it there. They may do whatever they want. We're just giving a comment here.
I hate to not include Highfield because this was developed by Barbara Milligan from Highfield. It was her concept.
That's what you're doing.
But, you know, they gotta be realistic too. Is MCC going to approve that leg?
Brian, what's our role here? Do we, do we, are we just making a recommendation to the Selectment?
I think the Selectment wanted to hear from you.
Okay.
You're more like on step seven, eight, and nine than one, two, and three.
Yeah.
Do we wanna have, right, rather the baseline question is, good idea, cultural district? Sure. Then whoever hits the road as, you know, then defines specifically where it is and who's gonna run it and what's gonna cost. But I think that the threshold question, sure, is it something worth pursuing and discussing as a policy level question for the planning board? Again, the recommendation is yes. And then we can settle the details later. I think that's what the Selectment are looking for.
So we've got some comments for him here.
Right. We'll get into the turning the wrenches, but I think from the policy level, this board says yes, no, do we need a cultural district? There's something the town, visions, as far as planning processes and plans. The question, the answer is probably yes. Do we go all the way down to the culture, to the Art Center? Do we go all the way up to Highfield? Those are questions to be answered at another date.
Ken?
Well, the only thing about the questions to be answered at a later date is concerning is we don't really have a role in this. The Selectment can go, it's here. And I don't believe we should endorse anything, like Ralph said. Maybe one of our stipulations, yes, but it should be walking access to all this as a part of the criteria. Because they could decide to do what they want. If we give them a yes, we think it's good. They could say, well, we don't, okay, we've got what we needed from you and go on.
There's gonna be public hearings on it anyways. And to get back to Brian's point, I think all we need is a positive motion to recommend that the Selectment pursue this.
Doug?
I think we should still give the, our recommendation if we have one. And I would say, I don't think there's a problem going to step six right away. I think we should consider, personally, I think that we should consider starting at Gifford Street. And if we wanna say cultural district starts here and cultural district extension points over towards the Artist's Guild and the same thing. The cultural district starts at the corner of Queens Bayway and Palmer Ave. And the cultural district extension could point towards Highfield. But, you know, then it's, I don't know, it just keeps your options open, but we should probably give as much feedback as we have.
So what we could do, we could draft a letter for the board. But, you know, at the, you know, at the concept level, the board endorses. It has specific concerns about how it would be implemented. Here are our concerns. They should be walkable. They should be open to sidewalks. It's something the MCC should can and should endorse. We may wanna start around the green area, expand outwards. So at least we'll have something to, you know, somebody to give them what they asked for.
That's what I'm thinking.
I agree with that.
So we'll see that at a future meeting? Next item on the agenda, transportation element, goals and policies.
I put this on the board's agenda, Jim. anticipating that the Selectmen, we're gonna get back to you, but they have their budget meetings tonight. That's where they are down at some neighborhood library. And they did not meet last night. So hopefully, they'll be on their agenda for the eleven. We can put this back on your agenda for the twelve.
Very good. Next item is the accessory apartment bylaw. Has everyone had a chance to read what we've gone over so far?
So if I can, Jim, I just, I took all your comments, the last four editions of it, and I put it into a, such a clean draft for your consideration. And Ralph had a nice idea. He talked on the phone about having sort of a checklist or a matrix or some bullet points to where you've been. This isn't saying that it's done, but here are the major points that you've been discussing. And I think this bylaw reflects. I just wanna make sure the board does understand that where that bylaw resides today. That's why I have these bullet points for you. It is allowed in the... bullet points for you. It's, it is allowed in new construction today. You can't add, that's the first bullet point. You may wanna talk about, well, what happens if we have a knock, a tear down, or a rebuild, have an existing structure, can I tear it down and rebuild it, but an accessory apartment? Today, the accessory apartment, the second bullet point, can only be within or added onto the single-family dwelling. And right now, this new bylaw would allow you to have an accessory structure with the department. The third bullet point is the big hurdle for the board. We're still discussing about whether or not it should be a by right use or with a site plan review or a special permit use for the Board of Appeals, or both. You know, there was a certain size apartment only needs a plan review. If it's gonna be a bigger apartment, it needs a special permit, or if it's in a specific area. There was the question, the fourth bullet point, about do we want a targeted area? Accessory apartments are allowed in residential and agricultural zones. That's 85% of the town. We need to think about that. And we took out the affordability. So those are the major points. And that's what I have in this draft. I know we've been, the board's working very hard on this, and it's, it's one of these discussions, so it comes in circles, but it's always moving forward. So I think it's getting there. I don't think it's ready for the warrant, because the warrant closes Friday next week. I think you may wanna vet this out.
Oh, yeah.
One thing I didn't see on this discussion list, I didn't see, I don't recall, we resolved, oh, it's number seven. What about, I guess if it's in, it is covered in number seven, so on-site nitrogen, okay, removal, it is covered.
Yes.
It's there. I knew that that's important.
We treat some of the lot sizes and whatnot, but the big, major changes, or, you know, by right, no affordability, you could be in an accessory structure. And we're gonna keep it for new construction and our tear downs. So I think this is the fruit of your labors. I think you made great progress. Right now, I'm not really ready for the warrant, but if you want to discuss this further with other boards, we could, you know, the board will send this out to all those interested parties and hold a hearing, an actual hearing, you know, to the other boards, interested third parties, and vet this out over the winter.
Yes?
When I saw this in my email, I thought this was great. I mean, this really helped me look at the, what we've got and brought those questions up. And I think tonight, this should make it very easy. We should just go down each bullet point and have a discussion about each bullet point, because those were the hot button topics. And I have found myself changing as a result of this, as I've gone through both the revised draft and these policy questions. So that's what I would like to do, is go down the bullet point by bullet point and discuss them. I'd like to hear what other people have to say about it.
I agree.
Paul, you have a comment?
I think this is a pretty good effort here. My only concern is we don't have anything on monitoring, monitoring. Enforcement, but enforcement comes when there's a complaint. There's no way of monitoring this.
There's the annual affidavit.
There is. There's a couple different things. They have to sign an affidavit.
And a number four.
And the town bylaw, and the town also requires every rentable unit to be inspected and a fee paid for it. It is a town bylaw.
It is.
So I mean, just because, well, if we made a new one, do you think it'd make a difference, Paul?
It could. We could get at least one more person to say.
Well, we could get another fee, probably. No, a year or two ago, they, the town passed a bylaw that every rentable unit had to be inspected every year, and a fee of $25 has to be paid. And it's, then this would fall into that, and we'd be relying on that bylaw to handle that, unless you feel you wanna create another one.
Well, it seems to me, I think these breakdowns, the design standards, procedures, enforcement, and so forth, and maybe the thing to do would be, before you get to enforcement, put a monitoring subheading and move that affidavit to the monitoring part of it to emphasize that a little bit. Because I read through it and I missed it.
Don't have a problem with that. That's just a presentation difference.
You got procedure, you got monitoring, and enforcement, and put the annual thing being right there. That would define it a little bit better, I think.
Good idea.
That could answer a lot of questions if somebody read it and was, hey, how are we gonna do this?
And Brian, do you think we could reference the town bylaw that already exists? No?
No, we don't need that. Not by law, a bylaw referencing a bylaw. We don't wanna do that.
I asked the question. Well, it comes up all the time, and I have to bring it up, so I just thought.
You don't wanna start cross-referencing general bylaws with zoning bylaws.
Okay.
And then when they delete one, then you're.
Okay, so let's, let's go down the points and talk about them one by one, okay? Should accessory apartments be allowed for new construction or only in existing structures as part of a reuse? What if there is a total knockdown, rebuild of an existing structure? Today's bylaw allows for accessory apartments as part of new construction. Doug, what do you think?
I think that they should be allowed to have new construction, as long as it fits in. Like I brought up before.
Complies with everything else.
Complies with everything else, because.
My constraining.
Right, because exactly. Because if you have a ranch and you wanna put a two-car garage with an apartment above it, that's new construction, but it might look just fine.
Yeah, I initially was just for existing structures, but I've given it a lot of thought, and I've come around to, as long as it fits in, and looking at the bylaw, too, where we do have site plan review, it has to look like a single-family dwelling, and the accessory buildings have to fit. I can go along with that. I think that's, that's good.
And if I could further that thought before, if we do go for that, I'd like to make a note that the garage portion doesn't exclude the square footage from the apartment, because the garage will be 500 or 600 square feet, and so the apartment above should be separately counted. Otherwise, it defeats the purpose.
I don't understand.
Well, the accessory apartment is based on its own square footage of the accessory apartment and not on anything else.
Not on the garage.
If the homeowner's building himself a garage, that's.
Okay, right. So the apartment would be defined as a second floor.
I thought that was understood.
Okay, yeah, I guess.
Yes, Brian.
It's, the accessory apartment units are under paragraph, you know, five under requirements. It's 50% of the floor of the principal dwelling. So it's up to 800.
Okay.
Yes, Ralph?
Right, so as we go through these, Jim, we need to, if we decide, make a decision on these questions, then we have, before we go to the next one, next bullet, we need to make sure that what we've decided is incorporated in the, in the draft here.
I believe that's what we just did.
Pardon?
I believe that's what we just did on the first bullet point.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, as we go through these, like, for instance, I don't see anything in the existing draft that says new construction. So you, 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 you know, you said, should it be allowed for new construction only or existing structures? So if we're gonna say, if we're gonna decide one way or the other, then it's gotta be in the bylaw. Okay?
If you look at design standards on top of page, you see accessory apartments, whether a part of new construction, reconstruction, alteration, or change to a single-family residence. So you're letting it run the whole gambit. So it is there. But it's a great point Ralph that you make. Whatever you vote, whatever you go down your policies, ensure it is in this draft.
Okay, right, I, right.
But that, that.
That's, that's covered.
It's covered.
It's covered.
We need to do that more times.
As, right, as we go through these.
But should we finish on one before we move on?
I thought we did.
Well, do we all agree on that, or? I don't know.
Does anyone disagree?
I didn't hear any other comment.
No, I didn't have any comment on that one.
Well, what I heard is, well, here's what I heard. We did. We heard a couple of questions, whether it was covered, and we pointed out that it is covered. So there's no, I think we're all set on the first bullet point, is what I heard, unless somebody feels differently.
I think we're good.
Check.
Check.
Okay. Should accessory apartments be constructed only within, added into, single-family dwellings? Or should accessory apartments also be allowed with accessory structures such as detached garages or barns? Today's bylaw allows accessory apartments within or added into single-family dwellings.
I have.
Only allowed.
Only allowed.
I have a comment.
Yes.
On this one, it says, you know, be allowed within accessory structures. I was always under the impression we wanted to make a word right in front of that, existing accessory structures. We, did, was our intention to allow somebody to build something extra and make it an accessory apartment? Or is it, you know what I mean? I was looking at that. That doesn't exclude somebody building a new construction.
Well, ask yourself this question. If they have the right to build an accessory structure, it conforms to all, and they're not using it as an apartment, and the next year they decide to use an apartment, they could do it that way, or they could do it all at one time. You're saying you'd rather make them wait a year to then they do it? Because right now, if you wanna put an accessory structure on your property, and you've got your lot coverage ratios, it's less than 18 feet high, you know, it meets all the things for an accessory structure, you could just not build it. And if we pass this bylaw, it would then be existing, and then the next year you could apply to just make it, or you wanna make it part of the review structure now, and then I think it has to have more teeth if we do it now, because then we get to decide whether, how it looks, and its architectural integrity with the single-family home.
That actually changes what I would think then, and then I would actually say, if that's what you're talking about in this bylaw, it shouldn't allow accessory structures. Because I don't believe we should be building this to allow two-family homes on one lot. That's what you're talking about. See, if it's an existing old home with a garage and apartment over it, or something like that, that's already there, or there's some house, some lots that have two houses on them. We know that. So that I can understand. But to specifically allow a bylaw that has a single-family home, and then allow somebody to put something next to it and make it an accessory apartment, I do not agree with.
So you're not buying into the language we defined where it has to look like a single-family home, be part of the design, all that thing we discussed before, that doesn't work for you?
Not in two, two buildings, no.
So if it was attached, is it, is it, is?
Because, see, that's not an accessory, you know, I mean, that's not an accessory structure. That's what I mean. If it was one house with a, with an apartment on the back.
Here's where the question came up, and I'm the one that brought it up. What happens if they, just like I said before, what happens if they decide to build an accessory structure, they build a barn? They have plenty of room, and someday they decide they wanna put a small apartment in it. Do you say no?
I don't think we should create a bylaw that allows people to do that, because it then allows people to plan ahead and say, oh, I wanna get something out of this property.
See, we gotta look at one of the reasons why we're doing this. We're trying to create housing for everyone, give people more options. And I know my parents' generation, a lot of them bought a two-family home, or a duplex, or something like that, as their first home. And people in Falmouth don't have that option. I think we wanna be able to create places not only for young families to invest in, but people that wanna age in place. So we, I wanna cover both ends of it, whether it's somebody that wants to start out new, or whether somebody wants to retain their current living space and stay there and make it affordable for them. The whole idea is to create housing in town so that we don't have these big housing developments that get pushed on us. I would rather see scattered housing, smaller units, more uniform to each individual neighborhood. You drive through, drive down the village of North Falmouth, on both sides of that street, there's big lots, there's one piece of property that's got three or four little cottages on it. So I don't see anything wrong with allowing people to do that from scratch. I don't wanna put any more impediments on creating housing for people that are younger. We need a young workforce here. We need people to stay here. I just think it's too important a thing to restrict. Otherwise, we're back to square one with the current conversion bylaw that hasn't worked. It hasn't really produced what we, we'd like it to produce.
Ralph?
Yeah, I have a question. Let's say a current homeowner has no garage. So they build a freestanding garage, just, just a garage, one story, that's it, a two-car garage, right? A year later, they say, okay, let's just get rid of the overhead doors, fill it in, and make an accessory apartment in there. How does that fit into what we're talking about right now? I'm asking the question. How is that gonna, how is that gonna be, how are you gonna deal with that?
Well, the bylaw talks about the design and architecturally, that it has the appearance of a single-family home and a garage, so I think it would have to look like a single-family home and a garage. And if we change the use, I mean, if they, if they, if they took off the garage door, put it in the front door, and a walkway going through it, and it would make it look different. It wouldn't look like a single-family garage.
Let's say, for instance, to get around that, they leave the garage doors there, and they just put a wall right behind the garage doors, right, just, just seal off the garage doors. So aesthetically, looking from the street, it looks like a garage, but actually, it's, it's an accessory apartment. So, I mean.
Well, I guess what was my understanding in the last, I think if it meets all the other standards, that would be allowed.
That would be allowed.
Okay, so.
As long as it's only 800 feet.
Yeah.
Eight hundred square feet.
It has to meet all the other standards.
Right.
So that's a great question, Ralph. Does the board want to require that the accessory use as a garage, or barn, or what it might be, that accessory use, customary incidental to a single-family home, has to remain? Let's say I have a garage, I wanna put an apartment above it. Well, the garage has gotta stay. You just can't put the false wall up and keep the doors there, make the whole thing the apartment. I think that's a good point. Do we wanna maintain, yes, you can have the barn, but you, you know, you might have to have a loft above it with an apartment, but the garage has to remain, is, I guess, another policy question.
So we have to put that in the bylaw, then?
Right, well, right. Do you, otherwise, that speaks to Ken's point.
Right.
That I know all of a sudden I have essentially a small micro house.
Yeah.
With another house.
Right.
But I think the intent of the bylaw, and a good pickup there, is that, no, no, you can keep your garage with an apartment above it, but you can't have the second dwelling unit, which is Ken's getting at.
All right, so then that talks about use. So you would, your language would say, you cannot eliminate the use of the accessory structure.
Right.
When, when adding a, when adding a, an accessory apartment.
Or for new construction.
Yeah, so you could have a dwelling unit on the lot located in either the principal dwelling or an accessory structure on the lot. So obviously, you're not going to, if you have a single-family dwelling, but the accessory apartment inside it, you're not gonna do anything. But you wanna make sure that whatever that other accessory structure is, that use remains.
Yeah, right, that's what I want.
So you would have a garage with an apartment above.
Yep.
Barn, but you're not gonna have just a separate second dwelling.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, here's, here's the issue. There are many, many buildings, accessory buildings on sites right now, that don't have kitchens, that you walk in, they're heated, they have a bathroom, they have a bedroom, TV room, they sometimes call it bunk rooms. They're built by right. They're there. You're saying we, they could never, that's in, by passing this, that that use would have to remain, and you can only put an addition on top of it. Is that what we're saying?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, well, that's what I heard, too.
Not if they're existing, though.
This is, this is the question that I'm trying to come up with. See, you guys aren't seeing this. What could happen is, just like Ralph said. What, what could happen is, just like Ralph said, if you put this just as it is right now, and you create a bylaw, every house could build a building next to it and call it an accessory apartment. Wait a minute, that's exactly what this is saying. What I was asking is the little word, existing accessory structures could be then turned into one. But if you're going to build a new construction accessory structure, like a barn, and you wanted to then say, hey, let's put an apartment, we'll put an apartment over it, but still keep your barn, or if you wanted to add a garage, don't, don't allow people to just add a garage today and tomorrow turn it into an accessory apartment. That's what I don't want to happen.
Right.
That, I mean, not trying to stop accessory apartments from happening.
Well, see, that's where I was initially. And having driven around town, I mean, there's three or four of them running around. And, and the whole idea of, what if you have a tear down? And what if you don't want to have it in your, your dwelling that you will, the owner will occupy, and you wanted to have it off to the side, it looks like a garage or a barn or something? And I came, kind of came around to that, and saying, yeah, I don't really have a problem with that. And we'd have to change the definition in the draft.
I'm all set with the garage, and I think that's easy. But I think the part that I'm trying to bring up right now is because I see a lot of properties, I go in them all the time. And many, many times, I walk into the buildings in the back, they're existing. I'm saying, they're existing, but they're not accessory apartments. But you know what? They're heated, they have bathrooms in them.
Those aren't the ones I'm talking about. I'm talking about people building new buildings and making accessory apartments.
No, my point is, someone could go, go ahead and build one of those buildings right now, and not put the stove in it, not make an apartment, and sell the house to somebody else. That person says, I get an existing building in the backyard, I want to make it an accessory apartment.
Yeah, but you can put a date. You can put a date right in it.
We're trying to get away from the date.
Effective, this bylaw has to be built by, you know?
Yeah.
Anything standing by the date of the bylaw, I mean, that would cover that.
Yeah, we're trying to get away from the date, though.
Well, then, then this won't ever pass, because I could tell you on the town meeting floor, this will get voted down. Because people in heavily dense neighborhoods don't want people being able to go, accessory apartment, accessory apartment, accessory apartment. I'm just telling you, that's what's going to happen. So you got to think of both ends of your, when you're trying to build this bylaw, that won't pass two-thirds vote on the floor.
But you're not in, you're totally discounting all the regulations we put in.
Yep, because...
You don't think they matter?
No, they wouldn't.
That's always going to be the fight, Ed.
Well, let's take, let me take a stab at, I see very valid points. So let's take a stab at, yes, you can build your single-family home with a detached garage, new construction. And you can make a decision whether you want to put that accessory apartment in your principal dwelling or your accessory use. So, yes, I want to build a garage, I want to put an apartment above. So I have an option. That's, that's what I'm envisioning this now. Like, I can always go out and build a cabin. I see people go out, I'm building a dollhouse for my daughter. It's twelve hundred square feet. And it's got all, it's just, but it doesn't have a kitchen. So I've, we've seen that too. But we're, we're trying to encourage people to get away from that and, and do something along these lines. So let me, let me work on, let me work on that second bullet point as an option.
You can build a two-hundred-square-foot shed without a permit, long as it's not within fifteen feet of the property line right now. And microhouses are a big deal throughout the country.
Build a hundred-and-twenty-foot shed with, you know, on the property.
Yeah.
We're building three-hundred-square-foot microhouses in Oregon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They actually have a show about it.
Yes, I saw it. I watched it. I thought it was fascinating.
I'm going to build one on a trailer. See you later. Hey, so, just when you're keeping that in mind, just for, you know, there's not a lot of room to build an apartment above a garage with an eighteen-foot height limitation. So that's probably not going to, you know, have too much impact.
That's usually the accessory structure, it can only go up eighteen feet. Somebody, let me take a look at bullet point number two. We can, because we want it to pass town meeting. We want people all the years with the work, and, and then again, sometimes these things don't pass at town meeting. Even with, you know, what you might consider to be the, the great bylaw, sometimes it takes two or three years. But Ken makes a great point, Ralph makes a great point.
And we've already passed one that's on the books for years with a lot of restrictions, and it never works, so.
So the board's doing great work here, trying to form something that, that makes it through town meeting, that also works, right?
And I, can I just throw one more comment? I would say, for the sake of Ken's point about making this more passable, I think I agree with him on keeping it to existing for accessory structures, because that is going to be a bone of contention.
I can see that right now. I mean, I...
The board may want to think about, then, today's bylaw only allows it within the dwelling, the single-family dwelling. To simplify matters, if you can't come, I mean, there's some more, but, you know, maybe you stick with, you could keep it in the dwelling.
Or in...
Or in a detached. It can't be a detached accessory structure. So we'll work on, we'll work those various things. Because you do want it to pass.
Pat?
Part of my difficulty here is that, as soon as you start allowing it in detached, we run into years down the road saying, okay, now I want to subdivide this lot off and make two lots out of it, regardless of buildability, because you've got two structures.
Well, no, those structures have to have existed prior to the town's adoption of the subdivision control law, which is nineteen fifty.
Right. That could change too.
Oh, yeah, it could always change something. But right now, they couldn't, they couldn't build a structure today and then come in eighty-one L. The structures had to have existed back, you know, in the fifties. Otherwise, they don't get that eighty-one L endorsement.
When we had started to talk about a detached structure and a new build, what we had been talking about is connecting it in some way to the main house, whether it's a breezeway that everybody used, so that it looked as if it were part of the main house. That didn't trouble me. When we're talking about detached garages and barns, that troubles me.
Well, that was my original comment, was that we're creating little housing developments on individual lots, and I kind of got shot down on that.
No, I still go back to, I, I was in agreement with you then, and I'm saying, I still go back to that.
And I kind of came around to, well, you know...
Well, you know, we have to find a compromise.
Well, I'm strongly advocating that we keep the new construction element in, only because of, it could easily be an attached two-car garage with a usable space.
Yeah. One of the first houses I looked at in town was on Lieutenant Hauser, and it was a Cape with the garage, attached garage, and that was an apartment. It was only probably a hundred and fifty square feet.
But it was attached.
But it, but it was attached.
And now the wording is substantially attached.
Oh, yeah.
Not just a little piece of lattice sticking together.
Yeah.
It had to be a main part of the structure.
Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, on the design standards, number two, this is, I guess, what we're talking about. And what we're saying here, it, it referenced specifically a garage or barn. But what, what I'm concerned about is that it says here, to the degree reasonably feasible. Well, I know we're, there's number, the third bullet is talking about a site plan review. So I, I'm, I'm thinking that if we're going to allow these things to happen, you know, and it's pretty convoluted right now, but, and we want to stay away from special permits. But to me, it, it seems like, under a site plan review, we'd have some clout. I can't remember all of the things that are involved with a site plan review, there's so many of them. But a, a lot of them, I guess, may, maybe, maybe we should not say site plan review, maybe we should say design review. Maybe we should say that in the, in the, in the bylaw, instead of site plan review. Because we want to get rid of the special permits. I think we're all pretty much agreed to that, because that's what's stymied the whole thing along, for the last couple of years. But design review will really give us some clout. And my, well, I've got one other, one other comment, and I don't have my, my two forty here with me, but I, I want to make sure that we have definitions in our definition section of our, of our, of our bylaw, definitions for apartment and principal dwellings, because that's where it gets really sticky. When people come to you and they say, well, well, this is, you know, this is this, or this is that, and, and where's your definition? And then what do we do? We sit here and debate what the definition is? We don't want to do that. We don't want to have to get out Webster's dictionary and then debate what the definition is. We need specific definitions that apply to accessory apartment bylaw.
Well, we have one that says here, definitions, accessory apartment in addition, dwelling unit subordinate in size to the principal dwelling unit on the lot, located either in the principal dwelling or an accessory structure on the lot. An accessory apartment is constructed so as to maintain the appearance and the essential character of a single-family dwelling or accessory structure thereto located on the lot.
Right. Okay, that, that's good. I just think that that definition needs to be moved into our, our, our pages of definitions in our, in our, in our bylaw, two forty, in our two forty. Because this, this, this is, this is a definition that's, I don't know.
Right, yes, there is a definition of accessory apartment in two forty dash thirteen.
Is very good, okay.
So we would substitute that, just for that.
Okay.
And there's a definition of structure, principal structure.
Okay, good. I, I didn't look it up, I'm sorry.
But that's all good points, because, you know, all of a sudden, someone will come in, spin it, and the board will...
Okay. We're going to be consistent, that's all.
So let me, uh, work on that for you. That's a good point, and the procedure is, Ralph, site plan review is about a site. So I'll emphasize the design review component of the site plan review and procedures.
I don't know if everybody agrees with that, but I mean, that, that would be my...
Well, I'll, I'll make that change, and you can discuss it.
Okay.
Yes, Pat?
Well, my understanding was that design review doesn't really have teeth in it. It can only be done by suasion.
You, you can reasonably condition a plan.
Okay.
Remember, you know, you can't deny plan reviews. You can only reasonably condition them. So if you think it's, the design in front of you, or the plan that's going to appear, has been reasonably altered to maintain this purpose, taking into account the design standards, purposes, and intent of this bylaw, you can reasonably condition it. So you might just say, well, gee whiz, you're going to have to do this or that. And then there's, it goes down to the building commissioner, here's your building permit, and they can, they can appeal the building.
And we're not, if we do away with a special permit, and this, all of this is going to be by right, there's not going to be any hearings, right? So...
You wouldn't notify the abutters, just like a plan review, but it's, it's, there's no public hearing.
Right. I mean, we ask, if it's site plan review, we do ask the comments, but, but under design review, I don't know whether we do. We, we haven't, but we could, obviously we could. Sorry, I don't, I don't want to take any more time.
Okay.
So, so it looks like in the definition section and the design standard section, we're going to have to do a lot of changes. And one, I guess what I'm getting from the board is that, that prin, subordinate in size of the principal dwelling unit on the lot located in either the principal dwelling or an attached accessory structure on the lot. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think right now, what I heard, Bob, was that I was going to go back and take a look at, it can be a detached accessory structure, but the accessory use must remain.
Yeah, okay.
In other words, you have a detached garage, and the accessory apartment can be built above the garage.
Yeah.
Or you, but you, but you can't just have a second dwelling.
Ken?
The, the problem I see with that is there are hundreds of buildings in the town that are already there, and that would eliminate them from being able to turn into apartments. So that's how I see it. I believe that existing detached accessory structures should be allowed. I just don't want them to be able to build new accessory structures and make them just an apartment. See, because how, how he just said that, if they have to be all detached in this new bylaw, all those buildings that are possibly, could be accessory apartments, wouldn't be allowed. I don't want to exclude that. I just don't want new construction to be built just for accessory apartments.
Right.
So...
Question.
Yes, Doug.
I'll see debates, sir, if they agree.
No, but you see what I mean?
Yes, I see, I see both sides of the coin.
If you just put existing right in front of the accessories, that might help.
I'm going to stop arguing with you.
So I can go out and build a garage right now before the bylaw passes?
What if this existing building is a garage? Will you let them convert it into an apartment?
You know?
Or does it have to stay a garage?
Yeah, I'm just stating, no, I mean, if it's already there, when we create a bylaw, I don't have a problem with that. I just want the bylaw to protect people from everybody being able to pop these buildings up. Just for that reason, after we create it.
Right, I understand what you said before, but I'm saying, if it's a garage existing now, you're, you're okay with changing it to an apartment?
Right.
Or, or if they want to make it attached. You know what? Our goal is to make them get built. And if there's a find, if we have to attach them to solve the problem, there could be...
Well, that's, that's not, that was just the definition, a complete thing allowed within existing accessory structures.
I think it's a good place to start.
A couple of words changes a lot of things, you know that, I mean...
Can we work out bullet point number two?
So number three, we talked about, but we didn't really resolve, right?
Doug, you want to read it?
Should accessory apartments be allowed as a matter of right with a site plan review by the planning board, or by special permit from the Board of Appeals, or both? The goal is to find the right regulatory blend that results in more people using the bylaw to produce housing opportunities while protecting neighborhood community character. Today's bylaw allows accessory apartments by special permit only. Last time we talked, Brian had what I thought was a good idea of a limited review without a special permit, and I was not a hundred percent clear on how much authority we would retain during the, whether it's called a site plan review or a design review, and how would that process work? Can you remind me what the idea was?
The idea would be that, you know, I want to build a single-family house with an accessory apartment. That would be, that would trigger site plan, that would trigger this bylaw. And as part of this bylaw, you can see under the, the, the procedures, the building commissioner would then send that application up to here for a plan review. Maybe I'll just call it a site plan review. And then you, you, this board, would take into consideration the purpose of this bylaw, the design standards, and the intent of everything here. And just like you saw with the commercial building, you can say, well, we want to see more architectural elevations, we want to see what the color is going to be. We want to see this blend into the, whatever it is, the existing neighborhood. Someone might come in with this, something that doesn't really quite fit the neighborhood. I want to build a, you know, a huge barn in Maravista. That doesn't really fit the neighborhood. Because I want to put an accessory, you know, whatever it might be. You can say, well, no, it's got to be, instead of a barn, it's going to be a garage, and all that sort of stuff.
So then the process is similar to what we have. They're still going to come into our meeting and be on our agenda.
Correct.
And we're still going to have...
Correct, and your, and then your, your notice goes out to your, just like a commercial site plan, just like for Town Fair Tire, or, I'm trying to think of other byright uses that you've seen on this plan review, site plan review for commercial uses. You would now have this residential use.
I think that's a good idea.
I think I'd like to expand that a little bit, though, because we do site plan reviews all the time, and it's defined in our bylaws.
And not for residential.
But I think I'd like to do site plan slash design review.
Yeah.
Because that really captures what we're talking about, I think.
And, and could we have some guidelines for that review?
I didn't want to start guidelines, because, you know...
Well, well, I guess if we keep referring back to what we already have, we'd...
Right. Right now, you have some design standards in the bylaw.
The goal would be that we would ensure that it meets these design standards already, already specified.
The town meeting, to the degree reasonable, to the degree reasonably feasible, the architectural effect equals a single-family house.
That's the key phrase, and we got to come back. And so if somebody comes up, and someone in the future, sitting where Ken is, or where anybody is, says, hey, that's...
anybody is, says, "Hey, that doesn't look like a single-family home at all." That couldn't happen. Right, because remember, we have a vast, we're starting to guidelines, like some boards have guidelines. Well, you know, it should be part of the bylaw.
Yes, Ralph.
Aren't we locked out of the site plan review because site plan review requires 1,000 square feet or five parking places? So if we're saying 800 square feet, we can't, there's no justification to do a site plan review.
You know, this will happen, is this would be the, in addition to those other attaches, the 1,000 square feet, the five parking spaces, you want to build an accessory apartment, requires site plan review. And then you look.
It'd be a new trigger.
Be a new trigger.
All right, you have to run that by me again.
Right now, in the zoning bylaw, a site plan review is required, has, it's section two forty, whatever it is, Article thirty-nine. Says the following require a plan review. It says, "Any new construction over 1,000 square feet or a change in use that requires five or more parking, additional parking spaces." Those are the only two triggers right now.
Right.
This adds a third.
This adds a?
This would add a third.
Third trigger.
So you're going to have to change the site plan review bylaw also?
No, no, this would just add, this would then add a site plan review requirement for anyone who wants to put a accessory apartment in a residential or agricultural zone. Whereas if you have your commercial site plan review over here under that current bylaw, this just really adds the requirement that it goes to you under that Article thirty-nine, which is site plan review. It just adds a third trigger. You're not following me, are you?
Well, I am, as long as you change the site plan review requirement itself. I mean, I look at the site plan review as not unless you have at least 1,000 square feet or five parking places, a site plan review is not triggered.
That's okay. So what happens next, Ralph, is this bylaw, as I say, this bylaw passes.
Right.
Under procedures, I'll write it up in such a fashion, then, prior to the issuance of a building permit, if you're looking at this, this would be new language.
Yeah.
In the bylaw. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for an accessory apartment, a site plan review pursuant to Article thirty-nine of the zoning bylaw shall be conducted by the planning board. And what you're saying is you want me to also amend Article thirty-nine to include.
I would think we would have to.
No, you don't.
Okay, well, then you say we don't, then that's fine. But I can see somebody coming to us and say, "Why are you doing a site plan review? I've only got 800 square feet and two parking places."
I would say that because.
You want accessory use.
Because you want an accessory apartment, section two forty dash, I never put the numbers in here.
I can't remember yet.
Requires a site plan. Look, I'll pass up, we'll talk about that.
As long as there's no conflict, that's all I care about.
That's fine, I enjoy thinking, making up about this. I make you guys think, you make me think, okay. I think we're going to be okay, but I'll talk to Aladio about it and Frank, see whether we need to tweak Article thirty-nine.
And doesn't design review pretty much, isn't that specific to the structure? And it's not, it has nothing to do with where it is on the lot or the driveway or anything like that, or vegetation or something? I can't even remember.
You can, under site, you can move things around the lot. You might say, "That building needs to come, you know, this way." You can do that.
Okay.
So let me see, do we then need to amend? Question. Article thirty-nine.
Moving on to the next bullet point, are we ready?
Do we all agree? I guess so.
Well, we're not agreeing, this has got more work.
Yeah. But it sounds like you're heading in the direction of a plan review, but we're working on that. Okay. That's fine.
I would just make one comment. The plan review has no bite. You have no control whatsoever. So this whole thing about going without a, that just basically means they're going to be able to put it somewhere on wherever they want.
Well, how can we give it bite?
Well, that's why I brought up that.
No, I don't know, I'm just saying, you've got no bite. You have no control over it going or not going in.
We can say no.
No, you can't, not in a site plan review, you can't.
No, it'd be allowed as a matter of right.
You can't.
You can't say, "We deny your site plan review." You might say, "Well, this accessory structure needs to be moved over here, needs to come down, you need to change it to look more, the architectural effect doesn't work." You could say, "In order for this building permit to issue, you must change."
Condition.
Condition. Reasonably conditioned.
As long as they fit the guidelines.
Correct.
Only, yeah.
If it does guidelines, off you go.
Okay. I think, Ken, I think that's the whole problem we're stuck with. If we don't do this, you're talking about a special permit, where that is the crux of the whole issue.
I understand, I'm just telling you, you have no bite, you have no control. And that's where this thing's going to have a problem. You've got no control. So that means everybody that applies, you have to approve at some point. You have to.
With certain conditions.
Right. But you can't do anything, there's no deny. That's what I'm just saying, there is no deny.
It has to be, it has to fit all the other conditions. When you just say that, I don't want to go out and say, "Hey, the planning board said they could put them anywhere," because that's not what we're saying. I want to be really clear about that.
No, I understand that.
We're saying they can only be, what, 850 square feet, 30% of the structure, the lot coverage is less than 18 feet high, look architecturally, all those other things have to be, if you say all that and then say we have no bite, then I agree with you. Got to put those two things together, that's all. We've got some work to do here.
It hasn't happened yet, because what we've been able to do is through suasion, to get things done closer to what we want. But it is, in my mind, perfectly conceivable that an applicant could come in and say, "Okay, fine, I hear you talking, but I'm going to do what I want to do anyway. I did what I should do, I came in here, I had your review, and now I'm going to go and build it the way I want to build it."
People are doing that now because whatever the building code allows and whatever the zoning allows, I mean, just Drive Along, Surf Drive, Beach now.
Right, but what Ken is saying is if we want to do this and make it fit into the neighborhood, somehow we have to have some kind of bite in what we're saying, and we don't.
Let's just take a few steps back. When you approve a plan review, and it goes down to the building permit, and they incorporate your plan review into the building permit, they have to build it as per plan.
Right.
What Ken's getting at is that there's no saying, "No, we think the use, the apartment use."
In this area or in this lot is not.
Is not compatible, whatever it might be. Eventually, yes, Ken's right, you will reasonably condition this, and you must do this X, Y, Z, A, B, C, and it goes down to get a building permit. But you do have a regulatory authority, it's not a surplusage exercise. It's attached to their building permit, and that's what they have to build.
Yeah. So.
And if they built it otherwise, they could get appealed or it would be a violation.
Well, we have to sign off.
Right.
Right now, remember, under plan reviews, for these commercial buildings, you know, there's that caveat in the bylaw that says it has to be built as per your decision, or bond, or something placed there to make sure it's built that way. Also, that's a special permit. There is no occupancy permit that may issue for anything that is a plan review until such terms that the planning board says, "Okay."
So we actually sign off on an as-built?
I get them all the time. You don't, you see them.
Right, no, but I'm saying that somebody looks at it, yeah, that's what they approved. So we get it as-built, yes.
Someone has assigned the use and occupancy. So it means, getting back to, there's no regulatory effect, there is a regulatory effect, but you must say yes. So eventually you must say yes, that's Ken's point. There's no use special permit.
Doug?
So say someone comes in, they have a really, a homemade plan of a real ugly boxy kind of a thing that just doesn't match anything and doesn't look good to us, and we say, "No, that just doesn't look good." It's sort of arbitrary on our point to say, it's, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder.
No, I think you go back to the bylaw.
We've got to go to bag.
You go back, that's why I said guidelines, you go back to the bylaw, and the bylaw says, bylaw says.
Got to fit into the neighborhood.
It's got to fit into the neighborhood, to the reasonably, whatever my language was.
You're not going to approve that.
You need to change your architectural design to this. You just, whether they want to do it or not, you just condition this plan review that, you know, you can't bring in a Ramco steel building and put it down next to someone's cottage. No, that doesn't work, show us something else. They say, "No." Okay, fine. We condition the plan that states that you must have a, you know.
So they can either come back, and as many times as it takes to get the plan to something that we can accept, or we can condition it as we see fit.
Right, and remember, there are, and you've done it very rarely, I think only once, but you may recall that you saw a plan that was so egregious, that didn't lend itself to a reasonably conditioned decision, can be denied. And you did that once on T-Ticket Highway, I think a couple of years ago, if you remember.
I do remember that.
And so if someone brings you in a truly egregious plan, that doesn't lend it reasonably conditioned, you can deny. So when you get those outliering plans, you can, you can give it, or for lack of information. You didn't give us the information we need, how you will be compatible with the neighborhood, therefore, for lack of information, your plan is denied, more or less procedural. You have to have a full application, where's your architectural drawings? It's not there, we can knock you out for that reason. So, you know, you have some fire.
So effectively, we are going to know what they're going to build.
And that's what, it's just like when you get some elevations in, or a site plan that comes in, you approve it, it's attached to a building permit, that's what they build. And if people want to, you know, say, for, let's say, lack of, and also, your site plan regulations indicate, you do have site plan review regulations as part of the code family. Now you can require that information that you are reasonably entitled to as part of the decision that you must make. So if they're not there, the elevations aren't there, you can ask for them, they'll come in, lack of information, the board is within its rights to say no. Pretty rare. Think of all the plan reviews we've done over the years, people typically want to get their permits, and that's usually an obstinate application, we call them, pretty rare. Spend a lot of time in here for no good reason.
Next bullet point?
Accessory apartments are a special permit used in a residential and agricultural zone districts. This is 85% of the land use of the town. This is the existing bylaw, 85%. Should this still be allowed, or should there be curtailment in the zoning districts where the accessory apartment will be allowed either by special permit, either by right or by special permit? So this is basic, the problem with this is.
You're not right there yet.
Right.
You have to get back to bullet points two and three.
Right. But also, we've got a lot of these buildings all over the place, and we've got to be careful what we do with them, how this impacts existing accessories.
Right. So I think it's a very important question, but I think we have to answer the first two bullet points first.
Okay, then the last point, today's bylaw has an affordability requirement, unless the accessory apartment is leased to a family member or a nonprofit. The proposed bylaw eliminates the affordability requirement. I think our bylaw says it has to be, one of the units has to be owner-occupied.
This is the affordability requirement.
Okay.
You can have an accessory apartment that you have a family member in, or leased to a nonprofit. Absent that, the accessory apartment must have, be rented to a person making 80% area median income allowance.
So we'd be taking away the affordability, but one of the two structures still has to be owner-occupied under our bylaw?
Oh, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Just, I just, for clarity, I just wanted, there's still a family component back and forth, maybe not in a unit.
But right now, today's bylaw, the unit has to be leased to a family member, a true mom and pop apartment.
Okay.
Or to a nonprofit that provides affordable housing. Or leased to somebody as, it's going to be a family member, or it's going to be affordable. And what we're doing now is we're taking out the.
You can't have an accessory apartment, nobody's going to build one for that.
So that's one of the key things that's coming out, I'll make sure the planning board members realize that, that's something we would have to explain to town meeting.
Yes, Ralph?
Brian, so today's bylaw about affordability as far as leased to a family member or not for profit, it's not in our draft, the draft yet, right?
Correct, right, this draft has taken it out.
Right, right. So we're going to take out the portion about family member and nonprofit also? Are we just taking out the proposed bylaw eliminates affordability requirement?
Correct, in other words.
We're taking it all out?
It's all out.
It's all out?
It's all out.
Okay, does everybody agree with that? That you don't, that you don't want to?
We don't want to restrict it.
Yeah, that kills, that's basically killing.
I know you don't want to restrict it, but you don't restrict it if you say, unless the accessory apartment is leased to a family member for not, for nonprofit. That's not a restriction.
It's restricted to, one of the units has to be owner-occupied.
That's the only restriction we're putting on.
That's the only restriction.
I understand that. I understand it, I'm just saying.
Whereas the other restriction, it had to be owner-occupied and the accessory had to be a family member.
No one wants to build them because of the deed restriction, they just don't want to do it, and they're not getting built.
All right, okay, I understand that.
That's, we feel that that has to be taken away in order to move this forward.
Okay, taking it all out, okay, that's right.
Okay.
But what we can, we can't really keep it in the bylaw, but maybe there should be some kind of wording as instructions to applicants about Mr. Galasso's point about, so we're going to require denitrification septics if they're in coastal proway, which a lot of these are going to be.
We already say that.
And, yeah, we have that in there, but Mr. Galasso had a real good point that we could make the applicant aware that there may be low-interest loans for the septic upgrade. I don't know, that can't be part of the bylaw, but maybe it should be part of our package to encourage, and if they accept that money, interest, zero-interest loan, then they might have to incorporate affordability. So that's just the only way to try to.
That's somebody else's gig though, isn't it? That's not.
Yeah, I guess it's true, but I'm just hoping, you know, is that user-friendly thing, we could maybe have a little helper sheet to go with it or something?
Sure.
Well, you know.
Got to build a bylaw first.
Well, I definitely agree with that.
We're dealing with Massachusetts, and unfortunately, we don't dispense financial rules. This board isn't empowered to do that. In the background, sure, staff level, sure, Mike makes a great point, but unfortunately, you're a regulatory board, and we don't get into the.
So that's more like a housing trust advocacy issue?
Exactly. Well, it's pretty clear, we're not ready for this town meeting, we have a lot of work to do, but I think we are making progress. We've got some real serious issues to get through. Looking forward to the next one. So the last bullet point is a yes.
And I was going to say, this definitely has to be sent out to the other boards, so we don't have another town meeting like we had.
Have a discussion, maybe even a joint meeting with the.
That board needs to be with this board, for sure.
We've got a lot of work to do.
Jim?
Yes.
I think we should also invite the Federal Housing Committee to at least attend the discussion. And then on the draft we have in front of us, the second page under enforcement, if we finish the bullets, I just had a couple of comments there. In the second line, it says, "These provisions, the accessory apartment shall be removed from the property." Well, I thought that that was a little bit too strong, because that might involve deconstruction of something. So I thought maybe you would say, "The accessory apartment use shall be decommissioned," or something of that effect, something to that effect, so that you're not saying, "Okay, you got to tear down or gut the area that you just, you just, that you had an accessory apartment in, that's all." I've just, I just thought that that would be a little, that's just a little bit too strong the way it is now.
I have a suggestion for that. So I know, I'm familiar with other towns where what they have is a policy called Restore a Single Family, whereas, you know, if you have an accessory apartment, that's essentially a two-family arrangement. So they will issue an order that you restore to single-family, and there's actually a permit in Barnstable you can take specifically, the Restore a Single Family permit.
Okay. Okay.
All that requires is you take out the kitchen of one or the other and combine the egress so that it's essentially a single-family.
Yeah, okay, well, whatever, Brian will have Brian come up with something.
The way we're going, I think all you'd have to do is pull out the stove and it's over.
Well, each town has its own.
All you have to do, but then bingo, you put in a microwave. And a hot plate.
But those would be, be conditions, you can't have any cooking equipment. I'm telling you, I'm in the field all the time, I see, I'm not making this up.
And you know what happens, too.
But we can make our own decision as to how that restored a single family is. Like, for instance, in Barnstable, taking out the stove's not enough. We gotta remove all that. You know, all cabinetry, everything has to be removed. It's at the discretion of the inspector to see, you know, he has to come out and do his inspection.
Okay, that's good, more discussion.
I'm just saying.
So we talk restored to single-family status and some criteria. Turn it to audio.
Maybe harder for him to try to control that.
All right, well, that was 45 minutes of robust discussion.
That's good.
I think they shut it off at 6:30.
Turn the heat on or end the meeting. Okay. We're not ready to, I must place my media for a second. We're not ready to go multi-family, so we're gonna...
No, I was going to, we're working on the mapping.
Yep.
And I was hopeful that we have something for you tonight, but I think it's cold, you want to go home.
I'd like to keep it on the agenda, and if we just don't discuss it in the future, that's okay. But if we're ever prepared, I'd like to always keep it there.
So your board knows, we are working on mapping and getting the downtown area done. And we'll hopefully have that for you next week or the week after. Next week might be a little... You're gonna be, you're gonna...
Because I thought the last discussion we had was quite enlightening about it. And I would like to be able to talk that through. General correspondence, we were copied on a letter, the selectmen have a meeting, they copied us on it, it's in the file if anyone wants to see it. That was the only thing.
What was that, a letter for what?
The selectmen are meeting with, what is it, McGansett Crossing? They have to approve the lip, and they, they're having a hearing. And we're just copied on, we're copied on that as a matter of course.
Okay, yeah.
Just, we're CC'd.
Yep.
Future agenda items.
I think, I think we need to have our committee representatives talk about...
Committee reports?
Yeah, committee reports.
Okay.
We haven't had that for a while.
No, I think it's a good idea.
And then just keep what we've been...
And then everything else that's already...
That's all that still needs to resolve.
The next meeting is January 12th.
Attorney Duffy will be here, he will be having an executive session, we'll bring you up to date on all your litigation.
That's all the meeting's gonna be?
Pretty much, it's gonna, pretty much.
That's great.
Whole meeting's an executive session.
Whoa, feel like the selectman now.
I was just making it clear you didn't have to come, I was... And that is the end of the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.